Before we begin the meeting, I'd like to stand and pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for those who are here tonight in the audience and for those tuned in at home. Tonight there will be two presentations, one by Lee Lu, our treasurer and head of business finance, and then Dr. Alan McDonnell will also present on the strategic plan and our technology initiatives.
Okay, great. I'm going to invite the board to sit with the audience so they have a clear view of the screen, and I'll open up the presentation. There we go.
Good evening. I just want to welcome all of our community members who came out to join us. This is the second presentation of the 2017-2018 school budget. Back on March 16th, we did a first initial presentation. I opened up with more of a narrative, and then Ms. Lee Lu, our director of finance and facilities, talked about the budget side of the presentation and the process. So first, and by the way, this version will be a little bit more streamlined, but at the end, we certainly will be happy to listen to any questions. If you have any clarifying questions, Lee and I are happy to answer them. So first, basically, we want the public to understand that this is a very thoughtful process, our budget planning, and this year, we clearly looked at our strategic plan and made sure the goals that we have in our five-year strategic plan are being addressed through the budget process. One goal, for example, just to give you an idea of what we're looking at, the writing revolution. For the past two years, due to grant money that we received, we've had a K-12 writing initiative in the district. We've had Dr. Judith Hockman, who's a very respected consultant in the education world. She's been working with all of our teachers in grades K through 12 to have, you know, a clear writing curriculum and continuum throughout our school district. We're seeing some wonderful results, and it's been embraced by our teachers, and that is something that we're planning to continue supporting in the years ahead. As new teachers come in, we need to budget money for training them. We also are looking at teacher leaders who can train new teachers and continue to train their colleagues. So that's just one example. Also, within the budget, we have money set aside for a shift with our science curriculum. The new state standards are coming out, and also in the area of ELA and mathematics. Also, we have started with our teachers creating online curriculum. So for many years, we've had curriculum binders and physical curriculum guides here in the district, but Dr. McDonnell has brought in a curriculum mapping software that enables teachers to, any new curriculum that's developed, to have it posted online, and other teachers, the advantage of that is it's at your fingertips. So a social studies teacher can log in and see what an English teacher is doing this month and next month, and it helps with collaboration, and it's something where if we have a new teacher stepping into a situation, the curriculum is there and it's constantly updated. Also, our English language learning program, which is for students who come to this country from another country and English was not their first language, last year, to be aligned with New York State guidelines, we have an integrated model, which is first, some pull-out, so about 50% of the time is pull-out education, and then about 50% of the time, we have a certified ENL teacher pushing into the core academics. Usually, it's English and math. Okay? We made sure that the budget would support that going forward for our English language learners. Also, this year, we did something very exciting. We brought back students who were placed out of district, back to Tuckahoe, their home district, and created a special class program at the elementary school. We hired an expert teacher, and we have a new student who entered the program back in September. The program is thriving. Right now, we have two new pre-kindergarten students who, in past years, would have needed to go out, are staying with us, and we also have referrals for students who are families and districts who are willing to pay tuition. So we added that to the budget this past summer, and we're going to certainly continue to support that going forward. Also in the budget, this is something new, a new 15-1 program down at Cottle. Dr. McDonnell has done very careful analysis of our special education needs and projections. There is a need for an additional 15-1 class, and this budget supports that. Also, our AP offerings, and I have a slide later that will get into that in more detail, but we have 10. We're adding an 11th this year. Although, in some cases, we do have smaller class sizes in our AP courses, we made a strong commitment to sustaining these AP courses. I think, you know, a model school district has a good selection of APs for our students, and that is certainly staying in the budget. Also, and the course, the additional 11th course is the AP Computer Science Principles that we are offering this year. Also, there's a number of new co-curriculum athletic activities that we implemented in the current 16-17 school year. There were four new sports and four co-curricular clubs. One of them is called the Tuckahoe High School Internship Program, which existed years ago. Due to budget, it was done away with, but we brought it back this year. The board supported it, and our seniors currently are benefiting from it, and we plan to continue that next year. The next slide, again, just aligned with our strategic plan goals. We have a Smart Schools Investment Plan. So a couple of years ago, we applied for, and then last year, we were granted $222,000 in state funding, it's a grant, to continue our technology initiative. So we've gotten, made a lot of progress. It's hard to believe that maybe six years ago, I think, that we had no wireless infrastructure here in Tuckahoe. So we've come a long way. Right now, we have a fully implemented one-to-one initiative. All of Tuckahoe's students in grades 3 through 12 receive a Chromebook, and our teachers have embraced integrating technology into their classroom instruction. The Smart School Investment Plan is our plan to spend that $222,000 over time. Dr. McDonnell met with a technology committee, which also board members participated in, and we have a detailed plan that was submitted to the state and approved going forward. That is part of the budget. Also, staff development. Back '07-'08, right after the financial fallout with the real estate market, we really did away with PD in this district. I mean, it was minimal. And slowly, we've been bringing it back, and I think we're at a point now where I would say we're doing some model professional development for our teachers and staff. And that is something that we plan to sustain and continue going forward. That is in the budget as well. Okay? Lee Lu, our director of finance, will be up here shortly, has a financial advisory committee, a budget advisory committee, I should say. And just to be transparent, is one of our goals in involving the community, and tonight is part of that process as well, us being transparent with you about how we're spending your tax dollars, and you having input into the process. We're continuing, another goal is to look for efficiencies and things that would generate revenue. Public school has very few opportunities to generate revenue, just the nature of how public schools are structured. But we've gotten creative. We have increased revenues. Lee Lu will speak to it in a moment and show you the actual numbers, but that is a positive trend for us, and I think it's helping sustain us in a tax cap environment, so that's important. Also, we have a goal to stay within the allowable tax levy. So to explain a little further, most of you probably heard 2% tax cap. Well, unfortunately, it's not really a 2% tax cap. It's either 2% maximum or a rate tied to the rate of inflation. So for Tuckahoe this year, we can only increase year-over-year 8 tenths of a percent, which is a little over $200,000. And again, Lee will give you the specific numbers, but our goal as a district is to stay under that tax cap. You could go over the tax cap and override it, but you need a 60% majority. You have to ask the community to support that. We are not there yet. We're adding program, we're adding staff, and we are staying under that tax cap, which I think is an important point to emphasize. To put it in perspective, too, last year, the allowable tax levy was 4 tenths of a percent, or $100,000 year-over-year. And we also remained under that tax cap, and we're able to still do some great things for the district. Now, the enrollment, I went over in more detail last time. I will not spend that much time on it, but, you know, at the elementary school, as you can see, the average class size is very desirable, and there's a strong commitment to maintaining that. For the most part, they're in the low to mid twenties. So in 17-18, for example, what we're projecting for kindergarten, kindergarten is not an exact science, we go by past trends and who is currently registered. We have five sections of kindergarten planned with 20 students per class. In grade four, I'm sorry, in grade one, it's a little higher. There would be four sections of first grade with 24 in a class. There is an aide, by the way, in every kindergarten and first grade class, there is a full-time aide. Then, in grade two, we're planning five sections with 21 students per section, per class, excuse me. In grade three, five sections, again, 21 students per section. Grade four, four sections with 21 students each, and grade five, four sections of 24. If you look at our total enrollment, it's higher, so people may be looking at the math and saying, wait a minute, do the division, it doesn't add up. You have to keep in mind, some of the students, and it's stated at the bottom, some of our students are in small self-contained special education classes. They're not represented in the average class size here. Okay? So if the math looks off, it is very accurate, it's just looking at gen ed class sizes for next year. Elementary school, I won't spend that much time on this, but again, aligned with the strategic plan, we're offering PD. We plan to continue that. It's been very rigorous this year. We've had Judy Hockman in, we've had a lot of great workshops, we had ENL courses for our students that Dr. McDonnell planned. Also, we plan to adopt a new K-12 science program. We budgeted for that. Continued PD for our English language learners into next year also, and again, implementing that new 12-11 class that I spoke about earlier. Also, ongoing support to sustain the writing revolution progress that we've made, continue to use a STAR assessment. So for RTI, all the Cottle students receive an assessment three times per year, and that is a normed assessment. It's accurate and reliable, and we administer that. It's an online assessment that we administer to our elementary school students. Also, we plan to maintain enrichment programs. We have a nice range of enrichment activities for our elementary kids, foreign language, theater, strings, arts and education, online math, all of that is in the budget. Also, a diversity club. One of the additional clubs that was added is a second section of the diversity club. It's very popular. Participation was strong, so this year, we added a second section, and we're maintaining it. Moving up to the middle school, just enrollment numbers projected for next year. We do have a large class leaving fifth grade, entering sixth. So we are expecting approximately 27 students per class in four sections. In grade seven, 21 per class, and in grade eight, an average of 23 per class. Some highlights for the middle school, of course, there are many more, but these are just, to name a few, to give you an idea. We're happy that we can have four sections at each grade level. There's a big advantage to running a middle school with one English teacher per grade level, one math teacher per grade level, one science teacher per grade level. We're in a teaming model. So these teachers have, and the goal in the schedule right now, which is being developed, is to give them collaborative planning time so they can sit and coordinate their curriculum, discuss supporting students, and various other topics that are important to quality middle school. Also, we're maintaining math labs. When we transitioned to the Common Core several years back, it was challenging for our kids. And children who did not get the initial Common Core instruction in grades K and 1 and 2 and 3 and 4, they really got hit hard in the middle school, because they didn't have the foundation of this new curriculum. And the state rolled it out in a way that a lot of people would criticize and classify as flawed, but we responded by adding a math lab, which is an extra period for our sixth grade students. It is a transition year, and we've seen some good results. In last year's math results, we're seeing an uptick, and we want to sustain that. It's a transition year, so that math lab is still in the budget. Also, we are adding or expanding the 15-1 program. Our students who are not able to learn in a full-size classroom, who need a smaller class as per their IEP, and this is a legal requirement, we've created some smaller classes for them with special education teacher. Also, there's robotics and mindset and digital citizenship integrated into special area classes. We're going to maintain those programs as well. The Roaring Tigers is a singing club run by our chorus teacher. It is, you know, a strong participation, and that is something that will remain in the budget. Late bus transportation. Several years ago, this was done away with due to budget cuts, but we've restored it, and we feel that, you know, we offer after-school extra help. All the teachers in the middle and high school offer one hour per week. In most cases, they do two 30-minute sessions for our students. But if you live at the opposite end of our school district, particularly in the village, it may be too difficult for you to walk home, particularly during the cold winter months. We don't do it all year, but as soon as the cold weather sets in and it gets dark early, we offer this late bus transportation, and the kids have really been taking advantage of it, so that is something that we feel strongly about maintaining. High school, it's a little different as far as, you know, students start to take different courses in high school, they have more choice, as you know. So we did not do, it's not like, okay, you take a grade level and divide it by four. It's more complicated than that. So just the overall enrollment of the high school, as you could see, this current year, 307. Next year, 296 is projected. You know, very little change, a small drop, but not much. We expect 70 students to move on to seventh grade approximately. In 10th grade, 91. 11th grade, 59. That is our smallest class in the district. And then grade 12, 76 students next year is projected. Now, these are the AP courses I mentioned earlier, and some of them may have 25, 26 students in a class, others may have eight or 10. But again, there's a strong commitment from the district to maintain these courses. They really matter, and many of our students will receive college credit for participating in these courses. Our college acceptances have dramatically improved, particularly with the tier-one colleges, and a lot of that has to do with implementing these courses and maintaining them. High school, just to touch on some strategic plan highlights, we've added a lab period this year to geometry. Our math department, I see Angela Georgie here, identified geometry as one of the most challenging regions that now is fully into Common Core curriculum. So we've added a lab period. We're hoping to see some positive results. You know, if you add one period, it's over 20 hours a year, it's time built in, and we do believe, you know, that is a great way to get better results, to give students more time on task. Also, the district's tech initiative, that is something that we're supporting. We have two teachers who have one, one has one period off, the other has two periods off. We will give them release time again next year. We budgeted for it, and they teach their peers. So they will go into classrooms and sit with a teacher on his or her prep and say, okay, you know, show me what your plans are next week, and I will show you how to integrate this technology into your lesson. They are booked constantly. In fact, they're overbooked. And the teachers have really taken advantage of it, they've done a great job, and we see some real impressive technology integration, and, you know, the engagement in every class has really gone up as a result of the tech integration. Also, we mentioned just our reward school status. So what sometimes a lot of the community doesn't know, we tried to promote it, but maybe we needed to do better at promoting it, for four years in a row, Tuckahoe High School was deemed by New York State reward school status. What that means is, we were in the top 20% of our region's performance as compared to the state. In addition, we had no significant gaps with subgroups. Now, subgroups are our English language learners. Another subgroup are socio-economically disadvantaged children. Another subgroup would be children with disabilities, children with IEPs. So we are doing well, not only overall in our performance, but also with those subgroups. Also, your graduation rate has to be strong, which Tuckahoe High School has a great graduation rate. So when you combine all these together, you can be designated a reward school. I knew, you know, in year one, we were excited. Year two, we said, wow, that's great, you must be on to something. Then year three and year four hit, and we said, this is not a coincidence. We really, really believe our strategic plan and our initiatives have helped us to get on track, and we're doing, I think, a very strong job with it. We also received, I should mention, $150,000 in grant money as a result of this designation over a two-year period, of which $100,000 was invested into the writing revolution initiative. So this has been very good for us, and, you know, each year, it's something that we strive to continue. Online opportunities, this is interesting, and for several years, we've worked with an online service through BOSI's, where if a student has the desire and the ambition to take, let's say, maybe an AP course, or wants to take one of our AP courses, but then can't fit in, let's say, a U.S. government course, we will work with them to help them maximize, you know, whatever advantages are there, and these online courses have come a long way. Over time, the quality is much better, the rigor is there, so a number of students have been participating and doing well. That's something that we budgeted for in the future. Also, co-curricular activities. I mentioned earlier, the high school internship program, that is, there's a lot of excitement around that, but also Habitat for Humanity. We've put out some promotion on it to recognize our students, but we have such a strong attendance. They've been working on builds all over Westchester under the guidance of Joanne Ornstein, who is the advisor. It's so well-attended that she actually came and made a request for a second session this year. So the board did approve that, and that's something that we want to keep in the budget. Also, there is a chorus group, they're named the Vocal Cats, and again, that is something that we added this year and will continue next year. So overall, what we're looking at as far as just staffing, adding 6.2 full-time employee teachers. Okay, that's, FT is just full-time employee. So in 16 and 17 and 17-18, we combined them. We did some teachers this year, and most of you know, we do have a growing enrollment, and that's what drove the addition of teachers. And I think I should mention, the board has heard me say this, we budget very closely. Right now, we project next year. We don't add extra teachers and say, okay, well, if the students come, and if not, we'll have them do extra things. We only ask for what we need. And then, in the event that, in August or September, if new students show up and we need to increase staff, we will come back to the board. But the board knows, you know, we don't make that request unless we absolutely need it. So in a tax cap environment, we've developed this approach where we only budget what we need, no extra. Okay? So that's what this reflects. Also, we are asking for a .6 special education teacher at the high school. Again, that's driven by special education, IEP mandated services. 2.2 special education teacher and a social studies teacher, and part of a speech teacher at the middle school. And then at Cottle, we're looking at two more special education teachers. One was added this year. We have the new program that I talked about, one will be for next year. The program needed to be supported by a speech teacher, and also, we've added some phys ed with the growing enrollment. We needed to increase phys ed. Okay? Some other staff, we had to add teaching assistants. Most of them are supporting special education, and also, one additional aide at Cottle. In the way of the co-curricular activities, for next year's budget, there'll be five, if you count what we did this year, maintaining it and what we're anticipating for next year. This is new four curriculum liaison positions. I mentioned earlier, Dr. McDonnell has a lot of work in supporting teachers, so we are asking for some money to be budgeted to formally appoint teacher leaders to work with their peers. We have that model now with the peer tech coaches, and it's working out really well, so we'd like to continue that into next year. Also, on the sports level, we have a thriving cheerleading program here in Tuckahoe, so our athletic director has recommended both fall and winter cheer. Girls' basketball, we had no basketball program last year. We were hopeful to bring back the varsity, but meanwhile, we brought back even a JV, and we're planning to run that again next year. Something new is girls' modified soccer. We believe the interest is there. If the interest is not there, by the way, we don't run the program. You have to have the numbers, but it is something that we project that will be supported. Girls' JV softball is also planned for next year. Boys' freshman basketball, it ran this year, did well, and we'd like to keep that in the budget for next year, and boys' JV soccer for next year. Now, at this point, I'm going to invite Ms. Lee Lu up, and she will talk about the financial aspect of the budget. Lee?
Good evening. So the budget process for the district begins in October, and I work closely with the administrative team to develop their needs assessment. And as we go through the school year, we put the budget together, preliminary budget, and then we also, I also meet with the budget advisory committee, and we work to look at what the district needs and how we are able to pay for that. We met earlier this, actually, last week, and we'll continue to meet throughout the year to discuss budgeting, as well as the financial health of the district. So in this slide, it shows you the state-required formula to come up with our allowable tax levy increase. And if you go through each line of the formula, which is provided by the state, they tell you, you start with last year's tax levy, and the tax levy is the amount of money that we raise from our taxpayers. We're allowed to multiply that by our tax-based growth factor, which is just bricks and mortar improvements to the district that adds to the assessed value of the community. To that, we are allowed to put things in and out, the pilots that are payments in lieu of taxes that we receive from some buildings in the center of the district. We take those and add those in. We take out prior year exemptions, then we multiply by our allowable growth factor, which is really the inflation rate. And this year, the state has told school districts, the inflation rate is 1.26%. The district's allowed to use either 2% or the inflation rate, whichever is lower, and so we're using 1.26%. And so we take our last year's adjusted tax levy, we multiply in that inflation factor, we add, we take out again the pilots as required by the state, and what we get is our new tax levy limit. Then we have some exemptions for capital projects and other things that the state allows us to take out. And at the bottom of the, at the end of the day, we come out with our allowable tax levy. And after all the exemptions and things that we're allowed to take in and out, it kind of changes the picture for each individual district. And the district's allowable tax levy next year is $27,102,674, which is an increase over the prior year of about $215,000. And so the allowable tax levy increase is .8%. So taxpayers in the district will see their taxes rise under 1% to, based on the state tax cap formula. And, the one on the right. Okay. So when we're taking a look at how we build a budget, we have to see what we have, we look at a rollover budget, we take a look at what we currently have, roll it over with any contractual obligations that we have for contracts to our teachers and other, out to BOSI's, and see what our new budget will look like. In addition, we have to look at what are driving our new costs in our budget. So between what we added to the budget this year that wasn't planned for at the last budget process, as well as what we think we need for next year, so as Mr. Albano has said, we have to add 6.2 teachers to the district for next year's budget. And that's a big budget driver. It will cost the district $638,000. We also have to add benefits, which are premium increases for health benefits and the cost of additional staffing, and that's $256,000. But on the other side, we have a reduction in what we're paying for special ed out-of-district tuition between taking students back to the district, as well as students who have graduated and are no longer part of the district's tuition needs outside the district placements. We're projecting a $269,000 decrease, as well as there's a reduction in the rate that we have to pay toward pension. The district has to pay a percentage of all our teacher salaries and our other staff member salaries to the state pension system, and that's dictated by law, and it's driven by how well the stock market and the investments of the pension firms do. This year, because the environment, the economic environment has been healthy, our pension rate requirement to contribute has gone down, and we anticipate $170,000 decrease. And that's on the expense side. On the revenue- On the revenue side, how we pay for these things, we are entitled to that $215,000 tax levy increase. We're also projecting that our out-of-district tuition increases are about $152,000. But unfortunately, we are also looking at a state aid decrease of $234,000. And we were hoping that by today, we would have heard from the state as to whether or not they were going to give us more or less money, hopefully more. But the state budget process has stalled, and right now, we don't know if there'll be any more state aid, although Governor Cuomo has indicated he doesn't wish to increase anything at this point in time because he's not sure what the federal government will be doing to the state's tax, to the state's budget. So at this point in time, all we know is that we are looking at a $234,000 decrease in state aid. Some of that is formula-driven, just what the state gives us, but the biggest percentage of that, the most of it, is really because we are spending less this year, so next year, in BOSI's and areas that we get expense aid back, so next year, our expense aid will be declining. So where does that leave us? We're looking at, when we look at all those things that we have to put in our budget for next year, it's $32,500,000 approximately is our budget. But our revenues, when you add up all the revenue pieces that we projected, are $31,500,000. So we have a budget gap of just under $1 million. And how do we propose to close that? We don't anticipate any additional state aid at this time, so that's not going to help. And the only other way, well, there are some other ways, but the way I'm proposing is that we use, we close that budget gap with using some of the monies from our fund balance. And I'm recommending that we appropriate that difference from our unreserved fund balance, which is the district's savings account, basically. It's monies that we are allowed by law to hold unreserved, unrestricted, for budget use or any other use the district and the Board of Education approves of. Last year, we took from our savings account $559,893. The year before, we took $1,073. This year, I'm recommending $995,849, and that will be added to our revenues, and that will close the budget gap that we're looking at. And the rationale for doing that, obviously, is to avoid cuts and will allow us to balance the budget. And it preserves program, and it reduces any further negative impact to students. Another way we could close the budget gap is to propose raising tax levies higher than the state allows us, which is called going over our budget cap, which would require a 60% vote by the community. But at this point in time, our reserves are healthy, and our fund balance is healthy, and I'm recommending that we use our fund balance to meet that budget gap. So here's a history of our fund balance. You can see, over time, the last column shows our total fund balance, and that number includes not only our district-allowed savings account, which is 4% of our budget, but as well as other reserves that the district's allowed to hold. And the big piece of that right now is our tax certiorari reserve, which is a reserve that we put together to pay back commercial organizations that request tax refunds because they feel they've been over-assessed. As you can see, in 2016-17, that's this current year, we've appropriated or plan to appropriate $559,000 in fund balance, but because of a surplus that we will see at the end of the year because we budget conservatively and we underspend what we expected on the expense side, as well as we have some surplus in the revenue side, we expect that we will still have a surplus and will be able to add to our fund balance at the end of the year. And for next year, even if we do use the million, almost million dollars in appropriated fund balance, I anticipate it will cause us to, if we're still conservative and we plan well for the year, I don't expect that we'll have more than a small decrease in our fund balance. It will still be healthy on the $5,200,000 side. So if we do use that appropriated fund balance, we'll go from $32,000,000 to expenditures, $32,000,500,000 to $899 in expenditures, $32,500,000 to $899 in revenues, and we will have covered our budget. What we still don't know for next year, we don't know the final state aid budget because there's a two-month extender that the state put into place today, which is just allowing the state to pay its bills for the next two months. So we're hoping that something is resolved by the end of May, and they will pay the district through the end of the school year. We're hopeful that that'll take place. I understand the legislature, the assemblymen and women and senators in the state will not receive salaries until this is all resolved. So we'll see if they can do that in two months, and maybe we'll have some more information. We also don't know next year what the tax certioraries will look like to the district. We typically can get those all throughout the year. I'll talk about that a little later. And we typically have to pay back, on average, the last few years of about $600,000 a year. We don't know the exact staffing levels that we'll have. We have to wait and see what the mandates are for our special education and English-language learning students, and anything else that might arise. In terms of tax certiorari, the district currently has a potential liability of $11,700,000, and we have a tax cert reserve of $3.2 million. And that's considered an adequate and healthy reserve because, in general, the potential liability isn't what we end up having to pay. We usually, everyone who puts in a tax certiorari requests a full amount. We budget it as, well, we don't budget it, but we hold it as a liability at the full amount, and then it's negotiated through lawyers and in court, and generally, it settles at a much lower percentage, sometimes 50%, sometimes a little less. So we have a nice, healthy reserve. And each year, we even have a line item in our budget of, this year, $30,000 for refunds of real property taxes. So refunds may be paid out of the reserve, or they can be bonded. If we end up having to pay more than we have in reserve, we could bond that. That's allowed by law. Right now, this year, as well as next year, and going forward for the next several years, we should have no problem with our tax certiorari reserve. But I do recommend that, over time, if we do have any surpluses at the end of the year, that some of those surpluses be designated to replenish the tax certiorari reserve each year, so that we'll continue to have the money to pay these each year. They don't go away. So if you look at the line items, we have, on our initial revenue budget, the, if you look at the column that's labeled 2017-18, those are the revenues that we're anticipating for the district. The first line, again, is what we're allowed by law to raise from state property taxes, real estate property taxes. And then the other lines are estimates based on what we've seen historically, as well as what we currently know, for all our other revenue lines. We have a certain amount that we receive in payments in lieu of taxes and sales tax. We're anticipating that to go up slightly because of the improvement in the economy. We are, the third line is charges for services, which are tuitions that we receive from other districts who send their students to our district. And you can see that I'm anticipating that we can increase that line because we have seen a steady trend of students from other districts that we anticipate will be able to increase our budget by that, $152,000 for that line. We still like to budget conservatively there because, at any time, districts can change their minds and decide not to send students to our district, and we would not want to have a shortfall at the, at that time. We need to make sure that we have enough money in our revenue budget to pay our bills. Also, we get other revenues for things like building fees and things like that. We're anticipating a slight increase in that as well. The next-to-last line is the state and federal aid, and that's where you see that decline in revenue that we anticipate, based on the governor's initial proposal, of $233,954. And then finally, the appropriation of the fund balance is our last revenue line to balance the budget. And that is an increase over last year of $436,000. So at the bottom of line, I'm projecting a revenue budget of $32,502,899. Budget-to-budget increase of $590,000 to $11,000, and that's a percentage increase of 1.85%. So this pie chart shows that big piece on the bottom, which I don't think you can see that well from where you're sitting, but the big piece on the bottom is the amount of money in our budget that we receive in revenues from our taxpayers, and that in a district like Tuckahoe in Westchester County, that's typical. 83% or so, 85% is typical of what you'd receive from the taxpayers, and then 9% is what we receive in state and federal aid. And that's also typical. Tuckahoe and many other districts in Westchester are considered wealthy school districts, and most of their revenues come from real property taxes. On the expenditure side, what we're looking at is, basically, as I discussed before, the big increase in our budget is in instruction. As we're adding teachers to the district, that will be a $700,000 increase. Other budget lines, I've looked very carefully at the budget line by line. I've trimmed back pretty much wherever I felt that there was an opportunity to trim back so that we could offset some of the increases that we're seeing. Again, we have paid off some debt, so we see a decline in our debt service requirements next year. I've also taken out some monies from the inter-fund transfer, which, in the past, were used for capital projects, small capital projects in the district. I've reallocated that in other parts of the budget into ongoing operations and maintenance so that we can maintain our building in our district, the physical property in the district, until we, at some point, take a look at a capital improvement bond. But it's something that we have to do each year as there are needs for maintenance in the district for all our buildings and grounds. And on the expenditure pie chart, the biggest portion, again, is in instruction, which is typical as well. You would expect that a school district mostly spends its money on instruction. And then, between instruction and the other big piece, which is employee benefits, that's close to 80% of our budget, and that's where we spend our money typically. Our expenditures are on teachers, and that's what we pay for in our district to teach our children. And then to support that, we have general support, some debt that we pay on our improvements to the district, and some transportation costs as well. If you take a look at the five-year history of the tax levy and of the budget, the first left side of the slide shows what our tax levy increases have looked like. When we look at 2013-14, before, just as the tax cap was going into place, we were up at a 3% increase in our tax levy. And over time, our tax levy increases have been much lower. Last year, it was only .4. This year, we're anticipating only .8 for a five-year average of about 1.5% increases each year. On the budget side, again, in 2013-14, we had a three, a little over 3% increase budget-to-budget from the prior year, and each year, we have gone down significantly. This year, we are anticipating an increase due to enrollment and increasing needs on that end, even with the offsetting things that we've looked at. But our five-year average is 1.69% year-on-year. And that's what it looks like graphically. The first bar, first set of bars are what happened in 2013-14 when the tax cap legislation went into effect. The darker line on the left is the tax levy. The lighter line on the right on each year is the budget, and you can see how the tax levy and the budget have decreased. Until this year, with our enrollment growth and other needs, we have shown an increase. But still, underneath that 2% that people think about, we're still below that. I do want to point out that if the district submits a budget to the voters twice and it's defeated two times, the board then must adopt a contingency budget. And one of the requirements of a contingency budget is that it must have a 0% tax levy increase. So the budget would have to be reduced by that amount, and $215,000 if we had to reduce that amount, or other revenues would have to be found, but we would have to, other contractual things that would have to be removed from the budget would be things that, we have to keep things that are contingent for our students to have a minimum proper education, but anything additional would be on the table for reductions. There's nothing mandated that has to come in or out. But one thing we have to do is to make sure that if we use our facilities for any community use, they would have to pay us exactly what it costs us. That's required by law. And we would have to make sure that anything else would be looked at so that we can meet a contingency budget. That does not have to be presented again to the community. It would just go into place. Important dates to remember is, the next meeting where the board will adopt the budget is scheduled for April 18th. And then, on May 8th, we'll have a public hearing on the adopted budget, and at that point in time, the budget will not change. And then, on May 16th, is the budget vote and the trustee election. And the budget vote is from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and there are also the trustee election, which are two three-year terms and one one-year term, and we encourage everyone to come out and vote. And those are the election districts, all three districts. And that's it.
Thank you.
If we go back?
Yeah. Just a moment. Okay. Thank you, Dr.
Okay. Lee, thank you very much for that. We've seen that presentation before, but I know, even though we've gone through it once before, it's an awful lot to digest. So what I'd like to do is open up to any questions from the board, and then we'll take, if there's any questions from the public. We'll open it up to the public as well. Any?
No questions.
No questions? Michelle?
I do have some questions. Um, Lee, when you went over the fund balance, and I think you did say this at the last meeting, um, the fund balance, that the numbers that you showed are, if the house, if we should purchase the house, is that reflected in the fund balance? And if the house is not purchased, what happens to the fund balance?
So let's go back to the fund balance. So the projected change in the fund balance for '16-17 accounts for what happens if we do purchase the house. I was conservative in that regard, and I took into account that if we don't purchase the house, the fund balance will grow an additional $680,000.
Six eighty.
Six eighty, with the cost of the house plus the additional expenses involved in purchasing the house that were anticipated to change the fund balance.
Okay. And so then, how would that have, then, obviously, then, that would just carry over until the next year?
Right. The board could decide at that point in time how they'd like to allocate that surplus at the end of the year if that were to maintain a surplus. We could use that to replenish our tax cert reserve or anything else that we might anticipate we might need in any other reserves. That would be a board discussion at that point in time.
Okay. So there, it's, you couldn't set it up so that, you know, if, if this should, if this should happen, then the budget would look like this? Because obviously, we have to adopt something.
We have to adopt a budget.
And we won't know before?
The budget vote.
The budget vote.
Right.
Okay. So just tell me that again. So if the money is considered a surplus, then what would happen?
Well, if we don't purchase the house, what I've done here in '16-17, I'll start back step, is I've anticipated that we would purchase the house. So our change in fund balance would only be a positive $200,000.
Okay.
The house would cost about $680,000 that we're planning to take out of our savings. So if we don't purchase the house, we would add that cost to the change in fund balance, and it would go up 680 plus the 200 already. It would be about 880. So we would have 880 in surplus at the end of the year, some of which would be refunding the first column, the appropriated fund balance, into our savings account. And anything else would be determined by the board, how they might want to use it in any other reserves.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I just, a comment. I'm really happy that you said again tonight that you're developing in-house experts. I really believe that that's important in a school district, to have the experts be on-site and with your children, then, to pay and bring them in. So I'm really happy about that.
Yeah. That has worked out really well. You know, our strategy has been to build up capacity with our current staff members, and we've seen some real impressive leadership in the teaching ranks. And, you know, they're embraced by their colleagues, and I must say, we're very pleased, particularly with the tech coaches. So we want to expand it, and there is a plan for that. And Dr. McDonald, I'm sure, under her leadership, it'll be a very effective model.
And the curriculum mapping software? I mean, it's, people don't have time to have face-to-face conversations these days, but to be able to access it, you know, at night, at 11:00
Well, if we don't purchase the house, what I've done here in '16, '17, I'll start back step, is I've anticipated that we would purchase the house.
Okay.
So our change in fund balance would only be a positive 200,000.
Okay.
The house would cost about $680,000 that we're planning to take out of our savings. So if we don't purchase the house, we would add that cost to the change in fund balance, and it would go up 680 plus the 200 already. It would be about 880. So we would have 880 in surplus at the end of the year, some of which would be refunding the first column, the appropriated fund balance, into our savings account. And anything else would be determined by the board how they might want to use it in any other reserves.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I just a comment. I'm really happy that you said again tonight that you're developing in-house experts. I really believe that that's important in a school district to have the experts be on site and with your children then to pay and bring them in. So I'm really happy about that.
Yeah, that has worked out really well. You know, our strategy has been to build up capacity with our current staff members. And we've seen some real impressive leadership in the teaching ranks. And, you know, they're embraced by their colleagues. And I must say, we're very pleased, particularly with the tech coaches. So we want to expand it. And there is a plan for that. And Dr. McDonald, I'm sure, under her leadership, it'll be a very effective model.
And the curriculum mapping software? I mean, people don't have time to have face-to-face conversations these days. But to be able to access it, you know, at night at 11 o'clock when you finally have everything settled, and you can do some work, it's just a really good, it's a good thing for us to be doing. It'll make planning a lot easier for everybody.
Yeah. And just to, you know, add to that, Danielle, we have an inclusion model on every grade level, whether it be with special education or with our English language learners, the ENL program. So, you know, that collaboration, you're right, you know, everyone works differently. And we have some teachers who will stay here and work after school hours. We have other teachers who need to go home and attend to their family, but then work into the late hours of the evening. So being able to collaborate digitally and to see what your colleagues are doing has really been helpful, and this would expand that. So it's been great.
Okay. Lee, again, just on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank you, I think, and the board and the administration. I think this year, there was a lot of change within the tax cap environment. It's not easy. We negotiated a new contract with the teachers. We negotiated a new contract with the administration. We've added items to the curriculum. We've added co-curricular activities. We added athletics. We added athletic directors. So I think there were a lot of additions on the expense side of things. And I think you did a great job with managing the budget and even allowing us to have money available to add to the fund balance at the end. So I commend you for that.
Just ask a call for any areas where we're not sure, it's a question mark, as to whether or not certain things there'll be participation for, and therefore, we're not sure that they're going to be needed. Is there a plan B for that money? So basically, we're allocating money not knowing if it's, you know, I think one of the areas was AP, the new AP course in athletics. There are teams there that were, as you said, we don't know if the participation is there. But yet, we're allocating money for those things. Are there other areas in other high school electives that maybe would reach more of the general education population rather than, you know, specific groups? Are there other things so that if the, you know, I know it's a choice that's being made, and that's what's being presented, but are there other options?
Yeah, it's a great question, Michelle. The challenge is, so let's say, some of these sports, maybe the fall or the winter, to add an elective mid-year, you know, right now, our guidance counselors and our administrators, our building administrators are planning the schedule for next year. Believe it or not, I mean, it happens as early as like February, March, as you know. So they are taking, for example, course requests. They're trying to gauge interest as far as what students are interested in. So it is a challenge to add program in mid-year. However, what we did this year, and what we would be open to, is if interest shifts, so let's say there's no interest in a particular modified team, but then our AD comes to us and says, well, look, you know, I have a group of 15 students who really would like to, you know, participate in this sports. Now, I don't think that will happen. This was his first year. So I, you know, I think now he's settled in, and he has a pretty good gauge on what the interests are. But certainly, I think we should remain open to it. And also, in the area of clubs and activities, you know, sometimes our GO, I met with the GO earlier in the year, they have great ideas. We do listen. If there was a particular club or activity that we had a core group of students interested in. But scheduling and programming really needs to be anticipated now.
Right. And I guess that's what I'm asking for, maybe to have the opposite approach in a way. Maybe the academic courses to be planned now. And then if there's an interest and the money is available, we could, like we did this year, find the money for it, rather than hold the money and not knowing if they're going to, last year, this year, some of the things didn't come to be, as we all know. So they didn't come to be. The board was willing to fund them, but they didn't happen. That money could have been put towards something else that maybe more students could have participated in and could have been a good experience for them. So I'm just kind of thinking about, you know, are there opportunities? And, you know, maybe we have until the next presentation to see. Or are there other opportunities? And if there are, they're not. But if there are, I'd like to see them.
Yeah. They've looked at it, you know, what you do is you also look at your existing staff. So, you know, and you also look at the areas of expertise, to be, you know, quite frank with you. So, for example, you know, the new AP technology course, you know, we're considering Dr. Mosher for that course. That's her area of expertise. That's her certification. So you do have to look at the existing staff, and then you also look at numbers. You know, we have some electives that do run, you know, mid-20s, but we also run electives with low numbers. And if you start to add more and more and more, you could eventually end up with five students in a class. And look, that would be a dream come true for a teacher and a student. But however, just financially, that's a very, very expensive thing to do. We do maintain low classes for APs, as I said earlier. Not all APs. Some are, you know, full classes of 25. We have other APs of eight. But AP is, you know, in my opinion, as your superintendent, an elective, to run an elective class with five kids, I don't know if that's, you know, fiscally responsible. So...
Ideally, I won't, I'm not asking for everything. I'm not saying, don't do the AP or don't, I'm, obviously, that's not what I'm saying. I'm just, I'm just hoping that there aren't other opportunities that we're not taking advantage of. And then only to find out that the money is left over because we didn't have the participation that we thought. When there's something from September, we could start engaging students in. And that's, I know that the biggest challenge, one of the biggest challenges in the high school is scheduling.
Yes.
You know, because when you have ones of everything, and you can offer many, many, many opportunities, but if there's only one, students have to pick and choose.
Sure.
And if it's only offered, you know, you can have this AP class that we're talking about runs the same time as AP English, and a choice has to be made. So ideally, there might be places where we should have two, you know, sections of something so that more kids take opportunity. Sometimes the enrollment is low because more kids can't take advantage of it because they're taking something else. I know it's not, it is a huge challenge, and I know it firsthand. I know it is a huge challenge.
And the online, just to comment on that, the online option, and again, the quality has improved so much over time, that is a very good option for a situation like that. So we've had students take, you know, online APs. I mean, you know, the ideal is to be in a classroom, of course. But if it simply will not fit in their schedule, that has provided us with a very nice option, and we do have the budget in place for that. So if a student has a conflict and has a, you know, a desire to take a particular course, you know, we can still make that work. So I, look, we do have time. I'll go back to the administrators. Lee was very thoughtful about this process. She met many, many times. And then Lee and I, together with Dr. McDonald, met. We went to every building, and we've had, but let's go back and look at their, you know, request. And if there's something else, we'll let you know.
On that, that's an interesting thought. So on that, is that a process that the administrators go through with you? Or is that something that the students or the teachers, like how does that, how does that evolve?
The scheduling process?
And the potential of additional classes or electives. Like, what's the process that would bring that about?
Yeah. I mean, that, basically, that's the scheduling process. And before you schedule, you do something called projections. So, for example, Dr. McDonald met with every special education teacher and psychologist in the district back January, I think, Ellen?
January.
January, February. And, you know, it's early, but you say to your staff, okay, what do you anticipate for next year? What are you thinking in the way of program, in the way of needs? And then you go grade level by grade level. It's a very tedious process. Then at the building level, your building administrators, they started by meeting with Lee. And again, you try to project ahead what you would need and also what you would want, what would enhance the school program. So then, all of them brought their request to Lee. We sat down. Then we started to have meetings as the administrative team. We did building by building, then all together. So it's an ongoing process, Rob. And then it ends up with the creation of a master schedule, which right now is in place. And then you start loading in the students. You try, we try our best to accommodate everyone. But as Michelle pointed out, with experience with her own children, I'm sure, you can't always accommodate every student with every course that they'd like to take. Sometimes they can't take it in 10th grade, but, you know, there's an opportunity in 11th. So we do our best for a small school. We offer a pretty, a pretty rich variety of courses and a good range. But it's something we always need to examine and stay current and pay attention to interest. And pay attention to the skills that our students may need as they go into college in the workforce. And I think, you know, the AP computer course, I think that is something that we're hoping will be, you know, strong appeal, you know, with our students.
Thank you. Okay. Any other thoughts or questions? No? Okay. For our second presentation this evening?
Do you want to ask?
Public comments or questions?
Any questions?
In regards to budget? Sorry, Cynthia.
Do I need to, I'm not sure if this is an official meeting. I need to announce myself. Do I?
No, it's not, but you can.
Okay. Okay. I'm Cynthia Tate, anyway. A couple of questions I had in regards to the curriculum. Like Danielle said, I'm on board with that curriculum mapping, which is great. I guess one of the questions I had, it's going to be great for teachers, I think, in regards to planning. But in regards for parents, will they also have access to that to also see what teachers are doing across the board so that we can sort of pace?
Ms. Tate, I'll let Dr. McDonald, who's overseeing that, answer.
Yeah, and you'll hear me talk about it in my presentation next as well, that there are different views. And so there's a granular view that educators will use. And then there is a more holistic view, you know, that parents can see, they can see, you know, week by week, you know, what's the basic timeline of when we should be where we are. But it is a living document, you know. So teachers may realize, well, you know, we need four more days here. We're going to pull it from here. But yes, it will have a view that we can put up for the public to see as well.
Okay. Other questions in regards to curriculum? I know that you're going to continue the writing revolution, which is a great program. So that's good to hear. The adoption of the science program, which is another nice thing. I guess in that, like when you talk about the science program, are we also talking about materials and books? Because like, for example, my son's earth science, we have no, I mean, he's in a Regent's class, eighth grade in Regent's class, and there is no textbook. So that I would like to see. I don't know where that is in the budget in regards to books. And that's not the only class. I mean, I know the foreign language classes have no textbooks. I know the English class, every novel that he reads, the books are falling apart. So I didn't see anywhere in the budget or mention of it of what is being put aside or what is going to be spent on actual materials that our kids will have access to.
Great question. Lee, you want to just go over the textbook lines, and then if...
We do have money in the textbook lines for any new textbooks that are needed in the district. I actually trimmed some of those lines back a little because they had been underspent in previous years. But there is more than the state allows us in terms of textbook and workbook money. And we typically have found that we can finance whatever textbooks are needed by the district whenever they have a new textbook adoption. Some of the times, I think, and I'm not a curriculum person, but my understanding is that when new curriculums are put into place, there needs to be a couple of years before the teachers decide what textbooks they may want to adopt. But otherwise, whenever there is a request, we have pretty much been able to address it.
All right. No, I guess I'm just trying to figure out how is that decision made? Because I find it odd to be in a Regent's class and have no book, or to be in foreign language class for two years and have no book. And his, it's like copies like up to here. So I...
Yeah. I mean, we can ask Dr. McDonald, or we can get back to you. There are books, but as Lee, I know for a fact that there are textbooks. I've signed off on them in foreign language. So it's not that we have no textbooks. I do also know that we are shifting more to online resources. But we will take a look at particular areas. Science, I suspect, you know, we are anticipating, sometimes we hold off in anticipation of, you know, new standards coming down from New York State. So we will take a look, and we'll get back to you on that.
If you look at the budget for, the money is there. So maybe that is, you know...
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out, like, who's making decisions? And maybe teachers, are they not asking? I don't know, that's all.
Yeah. But the good news is it's budgeted for. So then, Dr. McDonald will take a look at that process.
Well, as a parent, it would be very helpful, especially with foreign language, because it's, there's papers everywhere. And it's hard to tell what exactly they need to study for.
Okay.
Another thing was in regards to, and some mention was made of it, like those extra lines. And obviously, it's hard to project. And with the addition of like the extra sports. So now, obviously, with extra sports, you need extra money to fund coaches. So I guess with that said, are coaches going to be hired before we know the interest is there? Or is that going to wait until the interest is there, and then coaches are going to be hired?
To be honest with you, it sometimes happens both ways. You know, you do your best. Sometimes we will appoint the coach. There's been cases where then if we anticipate the interest. And again, with our AD in his second year, I do think he'll be able to predict with much more accuracy where we have the interest. I think in year one, it was a bit more of a challenge. However, if the number of students don't show, then the coach simply doesn't, doesn't receive their stipend. Okay? So if, and that has happened as well. We were hopeful in a couple of cases. We did start with the coach, but the coach simply wasn't, wasn't paid because they did not perform the service.
Okay. And one last question. I did hear with math, like you're going to have the math lab for sixth grade, which is great, and then also geometry, which are also going to have a math lab. I was just wondering if it was taken into consideration for other classes. For example, there are some eighth graders who take algebra. And I know that some of them, the second term were offered extra practice or sort of like a lab. And if that is going to be taken into consideration for kids who are, especially for kids who go, who are eighth graders taking a high school class. So is that going to be something that is considered? Not just for, I'm very happy, because my son's going to geometry, so that makes me happy, but I'm thinking of kids coming up.
Dr. McDonald, there has been discussion on it, and it's a great point.
Are you reading that next slide? No, that was not in the next slide. So, every year, we have academic support in mathematics and in English and from K and up. And so this year, what we did for eighth grade was we realized that there was an academic support need in algebra. And so we split up our academic support program, where some are with eighth grade math students and some with algebra. It depends on what the students' needs will be. If we need to do that again, that's what we'll do. But, you know, because there's always that block in there of academic support for ELA and math. It depends on what their needs are.
I guess I'm thinking more of like right at the get-go. So the eighth grader's going to algebra.
It's not typical, that it's not typical that a group that has been identified as advanced would need additional time on task. That is not typical.
But geometry, they're doing that. Is that going to be the model for geometry?
Right. Because geometry is a very different beast than algebra. Yes. And so, and so as, you know, people, there's people who know, you know, math and math. It's a very different process and a very different mindset of how do you, how do you think? And they've never been asked to think geometrically all year long before. And so that was identified by the math department as the place that needed the overall support. It's more targeted individual kids in the algebra classes, our teachers have found. So that's when we created it for them.
I was just thinking, no, I was thinking more of...
We haven't created an algebra, algebra class.
Yeah. No, I was just thinking more for, to, if those kids are placed in that class, and you want them to succeed, they will. Because I know there was a big percentage that did drop out. So that's, I was just thinking, in order for that not to happen, you know, I mean, earth science has the little extra side. I don't know. I just was thinking. That's all.
We're always open, you know, those discussions usually happen between the teachers, the building administration, and Dr. McDonald's involved as well. So, you know, we're always open to hearing recommendations. Sometimes, as we said earlier, sometimes the scheduling of it becomes the challenge as well. So, but we're always open if we identify an area of need where we think more time would benefit our students. Yeah, sure. We welcome that recommendation. But I think, you know, rightfully so, it should begin with the teachers and the departments and the administration. But we'll circle back and see if there's anything we missed. But I don't think so. We had the two recommendations, sixth grade and geometry, which came forward this year.
Okay. I think that's it for me.
Thank you, Cynthia.
I'm Tara Galati. So I want to applaud the writing, writing revolution. I think that's an amazing program that you've adopted for Tuckahoe, and that's well-spent money. So I want to thank you for that. I've seen a huge improvement in both my kids' writing, both at Cottle and at middle school. So I applaud the district for that. I want to ditto Cynthia's comment about books. My son does not have a Spanish workbook. If the textbook is there, it's in the class, and we don't see it. It's really hard for kids who have executive functioning disabilities. It's a total disaster. So workbook would be really helpful. Second year of Spanish, and, you know, the organization and the, just, you know, to be able to be helpful at home has been a nightmare. Also, earth science, no textbook, and math. Third year in middle school, and no math workbook, just packets and papers. And it would be really nice to have something that's cohesive for the students, just to be organized, and for parents to see a scope and sequence. It's very hard to manage these papers for kids. Also, Earth Science, no textbook, and math. Third year in middle school, and no math workbook, just packets and papers, and it would be really nice to have something that's cohesive for the students, just to be organized and for parents to see a scope and sequence. It's very hard to manage these papers for kids, and it's really hard to be a helpful parent when, you know, you can't go back and you can't go forward, you don't even know where the papers are. So that would be something that I would really look into as a district. I would just like to make a suggestion. So I work in Dom Sverri, and I was looking at their budget, and we want our test scores to go up, especially our Regentses. So what they adopted was they're paying teachers stipends to do Regents review, starting now. I think that would be well-spent money. You know, sometimes we can't ask teachers to do too much without paying them, so let's pay them. I think that would be money well-spent as well, and maybe something to look into for the budget for next year. Because that's something kids need. We know that students are in those classes, it's not, you know, we're guessing for these sports programs that we're guessing if we're going to have enrollment. We know we have students in these classes, let's help them and be proactive rather than reactive. Just another suggestion.
Thank you.
Can I just make a comment regarding the textbook situation? Because I see that myself, but also being a middle school teacher, I see the challenge of getting a textbook that works for me is hard. But I would make a recommend, because like, just for instance, this year, the standards changed again. Again, everything is different. My science book doesn't match the science curriculum, so I have to come up with things on my own. But I think that if the teachers know a unit ahead of time, and perhaps you can get them put in a bound, like a spiral bound type print job, so that at least a unit is together for the child. I know Ms. Papas does it for her modules, their little, little, even though they're teacher-created, they're all in one place. And that might be a little easier to manage for both the parents and the kids.
Well, we've heard from three parents, so, you know, we budgeted, this is of course, you know, the budget process, and the money is there to support it. I think what has to happen next is, because we've heard from three parents that it's a concern, Dr. McDonald will, I took diligent notes, we will circle back with our departments and our grade levels and our building administrators, and, you know, the good news is we budgeted to support, so whether it be workbooks or bound units or whatever it may be, we will certainly support it. Okay? Okay?
All right. Any other questions, thoughts? No? Okay. Dr. McDonald is going to present an update on our teaching and learning curriculum and our technology teaching tools that were part of our strategic plan.
Should we?
I'll get a better view.
If you'd like to come around, feel free. Mr. Albano asked me to give you a brief update, so I will, I will be highlighting for you any of these things that you'd like to hear more about. We can get together again and flesh them out. I've brought some student examples of some things, just to show you some things that have been going on in three areas of our strategic plan. So these are the three I've been asked to tell you about tonight in terms of our status this year, teaching and learning, curriculum, and our technology. So I've selected parts of it that are current to this year. As people listening at home may recall, we're in year four of five, so some of these initiatives have already been completed. They were slated for the first two years, they were finished, that's why we created an updated strategic plan. So I'm just going to give you highlights for the parts that had pieces from this year. All right, so under teacher, teaching and learning, part B of it was about teacher leadership and mentoring, and our overall goal was to promote and support teacher leadership to improve all of our learning and student achievement. And as has already been mentioned, we are proposing the creation of teacher leadership positions. What's not new, but we are doing this year, so I didn't put it on the slide, is our mentor program continued, and we did training with both mentors and mentees, that's moving forward. But we really want to focus on bringing that expertise in-house, as Mrs. Neal has pointed out as well, that she finds that to be valuable, and we find that to be very valuable, and we're excited to bring the leadership in-house and have the initial focus of these leadership positions beyond writing, across the content area. Since we've just spent so much time and money and effort on that process, we would like to not have it go away and to have internal capacity. So that's a big thing that we've been building this year that you'll see impact next year. One of the goals that actually was from earlier in the plan was, in terms of timeline, improvement and implementation of human resources system. We were asked to create a rigorous and extensive search process and have systems in place. So led by Mr. Albano, this year, he has created with us as an admin team, a really consistent teacher hiring protocol, that all of our administrative team, we've now been through it twice together, so that we know what is expected of us as leaders as we go into the teacher hiring process, so we can really get the highest quality candidates in a fair and equitable manner and be consistent. And we're using a modified version of that for our search for middle school principal. Actually, we added a layer of interviewing, we had an admin team interview for finalists for middle school principal. And it's been very helpful for us as an administrative team to know we're all doing the same thing, this is how we do this, and so that we can feel that it's a process that's worth and valuable and consistent. D was about professional staff development and cultivating that culture, that values that we always are going to be improving, all right? That ongoing improvement. So just a couple of bullets that we've done new this year. I redesigned our curriculum instruction and assessment committee, used to be the CIAC, now it's the PD CIAC Committee. We needed a professional development committee in this district, and we didn't really have one. And so I redesigned that committee, it now includes a representative from higher education to help us figure out what we should be doing in terms of professional development. It has new teachers, official people representing our parents as well, and really trying to look more systemically ahead for professional development, not just what's the next jazzy thing, but really then, for the first time, we'll be taking a needs assessment extensively from our teachers, what is it that you think you need to learn? And build that plan every year moving forward. For the first time, we actually provided training for our teacher aides and teaching assistants on behavioral supports and interventions. These are the people who, many of them are working with our most needy population of children. There may be a one-to-one aide for a special education child, or a classroom aide in one of our special education rooms, or even a general aide in a kindergarten classroom. And we did this on our last superintendent's conference day with the Carbone Clinic, who are renowned for their work in behavioral supports for kids, so that all of our staff can feel they have the capacity to help children. We don't want a teacher aide inadvertently saying something that's exactly against a behavior plan, we're trying to help a child learn how to become independent. It was a very valuable experience that morning, so that all our staff who work directly with our kids are getting that kind of professional, truly great development. We are excited to bring that in. We also, this year, for the first time, are doing work with all of our teachers on how to support English language learners. As Mr. Albano mentioned, we do have a model that's integrated, so sometimes the English language learners will have an ESL teacher pushing into their class, sometimes they'll pull out, but the child's still being educated all day long, and sometimes the only person there is their general education teacher. So we took it upon ourselves to bring in some people to work with our staff, so that all teachers can better reach the needs of our students who are learning English as a second and sometimes their language. And that's been very successful, and our teachers have really felt that was valuable time spent. We have also just partnered with the College of New Rochelle. They have a national grant that's named Reset. I'm sure it stands for Great Letters, that I will not recall at this point, but it's about getting an additional certification in TESL, Teaching English, to students of other languages, speakers of other languages. And so our staff can actually sign up for that, and we have one staff member doing it now, there's another cohort starting in the fall, where the grant pays for the classes for them to earn that second certification, or for some teachers, it's a third, in teaching students, again, where English is not their first language. Same need, these children are with teachers all day long, but they don't have that bilingual program here, we're too small for one, they don't have that additional support, so that's raising the capacity of our teachers. Writing Revolution, we've talked about, continued. New science standards finalized in January for the state of New York, so we got someone in right in March, they implement next year. We started with middle school, really looking at those new science standards, and Cottle is next, you know, looking at the K-5, it was mentioned about, a new program for them, because we need to realign everything, standards just changed. So things have moved, rocks are on a different grade level now in elementary, so who's going to take the rocks? And working all that out. And we did unit design training. We mentioned this curriculum mapping software, which will come up again, and we really felt it was important, before we asked teachers to sit down with a piece of software and just start plugging in the holes, we needed to make sure we all had a common language for what it means to design units well, so that then when we do this work, we are talking in a common language. So we did bring in consultants to work on that. E was about discussing the effectiveness of our newly created administrative team, so that is ongoing. As you all know, we have a new director of health, PE, and athletics. And another thing that we've done in terms of leadership with our admin team, that due to the increase with students of special needs, we have district students, we have tuition-paying guests, as well as the need for myself to also supervise technology, because we do not have a director of technology, but we have a 120 technology initiative, we realized that was a hole in our leadership. The board has been so kind to add some special education leadership support, so we do have a person on a stipend who coordinates our placements, both those special ed students coming into our district and those we have placed out, and that's a stipend, a teacher's stipend position. And the board also has provided us with three days a month of professional support in transition services for special education children. There are a lot of resources for children with special needs, both when they're with us and when they graduate and leave us, that we are not maximizing. And so this person is going to help with that, do some parent training, and really help families in the transition times with special education. So on the curriculum front, the first one was to align with Common Core. That's something that we're constantly doing, but standards are starting to change. Our biggest one, you've already heard about, is Writing Revolution. And that was our big curricular push this current year. Creating electronic curriculum maps, we've already spoken about that. Just to be clear what that's going to look like, Rubicon Atlas is the software, is the company that we have contracted with as the platform. We did do the unit design PD. The new maps are going to phase in as the curricular changes demand. What I'm not doing is asking every teacher to sit down and type into a program everything they're currently doing, if they already have a vehicle that has captured that for themselves. We're starting with those that are changing. So science has new standards, they're going to start mapping. ELA and math are supposed to be coming out as new any day now, spring is when they said. We don't think it'll be a massive change, but any change requires thoughtful practice changes. What are we going to do? What did they move? So that's what you'll see, is that the new program will take on the new standards, and those are the first ones that you will see turn up in these maps. D was about STEM, how do we enhance science, technology, engineering, and math curriculum? So to let you know what's happened this year, our high school STEAM class, we added the letter A, that represents art, because there is a design aspect to technology and science and engineering, so we call it STEAM here. It is in its second year. Our sixth grade coding elective has added a robotics unit this year, thanks to a Toccoho School Foundation grant that bought them the parts for the robot, so we thank the TSF for that, because that will be ongoing in perpetuity, those robot parts will be there for that. We've mentioned the new AP in Computer Science Principles of the high school. And for those who are listening, I really want to highlight just a piece of that, this is not the coding AP in Computer Science, this is Computer Science Principles, where the only prerequisite is success in Algebra I. That's all you need, a good understanding of Algebra I. All of our APs have a recommendation of, you have an 85 in the course, that's the prerequisite, that's the recommendation. So no matter what age you are, that's the level of math you need to start in this course. So I think of it as sort of an entry-level AP. This could be an AP for students who never consider themselves to want to take an AP. This is a great one to try, because it's project-based, actually, it's a portfolio like art does, that they build throughout the course. It's a really neat opportunity for students who might, for the first time, think, hey, maybe I can actually take an AP. So if you're listening, talk to your children, if they're in high school, it's not sitting down and coding all day. There is an AP for that, this is not that one. It's a brand-new course, it just started this year by the college board. And we continue to evaluate our offerings for student engagement. Dr. Lenahan wanted me to make sure I mentioned that, when there's low enrollment, because students aren't interested, then we create new electives, all right? There was a 3D design and printing elective, which is the pictures at the bottom, and we had two students, the class competed, and we had two students come in second place in a contest, where they had to design a boat that would be able to go 66 centimeters there with five pennies on it in the fastest time. And they created that item through a 3D printer, and it placed in the competition, so that was pretty cool. And that never occurred before, but it was interesting, and so that's what I mean by this constantly looking, are students engaged? Is this something that will engage students? Do we need some new electives? Constantly looking at that every year. So the last part, see, I'm going quick, is technology. So what's new in technology this year? Part, I'm focusing on part D and E of that plan, because those are the big ones for this year. D was about the staff development, and how are we doing that? So our peer tech coaches are still in the work. They work with teachers every day on teaching strategies and implementing technology. I have a few examples I'm going to show you of things that have been going on, so you can enjoy that. One is that all of our teacher websites had to change. Echoc is the host of tuccohoschools.org, and they changed all of their websites over the summer and told us all teacher pages would be dumped and you would have to create new ones. So we said, well, if we have to recreate them anyway, let's build them in a platform that's not dependent upon the vendor we use to host our website. So we moved all teacher websites to Google Sites. So no matter who the next contractor is to host tuccohoschools.org, we won't lose our websites ever again, they're ours. So I just picked two and talked to the teachers, just to show you what our teachers have done. This is Mr. Greco's teacher page, and they're all linkable straight from the homepage of a school, you just click Teacher Websites, there's a list, you click on the teacher. And so he uses it for different kinds of things. This was his back-to-school presentation, he's got it on a moving slide, you can click pause, so it doesn't have to keep moving. So you can see what he shared at back-to-school night. His courses he has listed over here, and inside, we'll just give you an example, in sixth grade science, he updates daily, it's just a Google Doc where he writes in the homework, and you can scroll and see the whole blasted year homework if you so wish. Feel free, if your child was sick, they got to make something up, it's there, right? So apparently tonight, right, these guys should be doing this, and look at all these kids right now who are logged in, taking a peek at that page. Good, they're checking, we're so proud of them. Should go to sleep soon. But, and the ones that aren't highlighted means it's open, but it's not, they're active, like it's open as a tab, but they're not really looking at it right now. But they do, they obviously use it, there are their cute little pictures in the corner, right? He also does places where they can see current science news and places other resources. He just keeps updating this all the time, so there's resources everywhere. So that's one example. A Cottle example, oh, hold on, we got to go back and make it live, escape out of that, press present, let's go back, there we go. This is Mrs. Beach's site, she's a second grade teacher, you'll see she has set herself completely differently, right? But it's got what's happening this week, so they know what's going on. She also has a daily homework, you'll notice it looks very different than Mr. Greco's. He's a middle school teacher, right? Hers looks just like they're assigned that, so they can see what tonight's homework is. She also has what's going on in Reading Wonders for the week, so parents can help support. Here's what we're doing in our phonics, it's all the air, air, airs this week, so, you know, all those phones that we want to try to get, how do we spell them? The vocabulary for the week of the stories that they're working on, so parents can know what's going on, she updates that every week. So those are just two examples, feel free to go on and click on any of your kids', you know, teacher's sites, and see what they're up to. Last student example I want to show you, to just give you an example of things that are happening because of technology that could have never happened before. It's a 26-second video clip, all right? There is an app called Quiver, and what it does, if we can go back to it, here we go, is students color something that's preset, it's an actual handout, it's like an actual worksheet, but is designed, so when the app is using the phone, the camera of your phone or computer, whatever you're using in terms of that device, it actually looks like to a kid, you'll see, it's like picks up the piece of paper and turns it 3D. And so this was a picture of the world, and this child, if we can hear it, I'll tell you, she's going to be talking about Henry Hudson, and what was going on with good old HH while he was, so we'll put it to full screen. And what was going on with good old HH while he was, so we'll put it to full screen. She drew what's down here and it's three-D.
Henry Hudson sailed from Belgium. He went up north and looked around Iceland.
See, it's starting to turn it into space in the background.
He sailed west and hit Greenland. After Greenland, there was too much ice, so he decided to turn south and go back to Belgium.
Very cool. All right? So she decided to talk about Henry Hudson. She was doing him as her explorer. And instead of just having, you know, a physical flat thing where she drew arrows, she says, no, I'm going to make a video. It's going to be a globe. I'm going to turn the app so I can show you exactly where he was, has the sense, you know, of that. And that's something, didn't exist last year, right? So that's one of the things that our peer tech coaches are, are bringing to our teachers. And they came to say, hey, we have this fourth grade explorer project. What can we do differently? That was one of the things that came to them, all right? So other, just a couple of apps that we, Blogger has changed, TurnedIn.com, Kahoot, these we've been using for years, but new features come up. Apps always change. So one of the things our peer tech coaches are doing, saying, I know you guys use Kahoot. Let me tell you about a new feature. You can now have teams instead of individual kids. Let me tell you about the new features because we get used to something, we tend to just use it the way we've always used it. Not good enough for our peer tech coaches. They're always putting out, hey, we know you guys like to use that. Here's another feature of that thing you've been using before. So it's easily accessible to teachers. It's not a brand-new whole thing. It's, hey, just one more enhancement to something you already use. So we focus on that. This is the first year that we have purchased WeVideo for our district's use. It's an online video creation tool that can be on a Chromebook. So we don't need heavy software on, on a computer. And already it's gone into three different places. We just purchased it, I believe, in January. And so fifth grade did a Battle of the American Revolution using WeVideo. High school did a Spanish Super Bowl commercials. They created commercials à la Super Bowl fashion. And high school did human rights videos with it. And it's just a great tool that we didn't have before. And we now have it based on teachers asking and then the peer tech coaches saying that makes sense. They come to me, I say, where's the money? We find the money and we make it happen because it's going to be used in a lot of different So what else do we have? We did do hour code at many grade levels. Second grade was a big grade level for hour of code this past year. They had not been a big player in it in prior years. We did purchase a new version of Smart Notebook. So Smart Boards are the interactive whiteboards. We have Smart Brand, it's a brand, in all of our classrooms currently. And we were about four years behind on the software that was running on them. So we've updated that software. The software can run on any type of board. So if we replace them with something else, the software still runs. But we started rolling that out. It's being piloted right now with our peer tech coaches to make sure we know what these new features are. And then over spring break, it'll start going into classrooms and we'll be training our teachers on that. We partnered with the PTA in terms of technology to bring the movie Screenagers to the district. Was about children and their handheld technologies. And we had a nice panel of people afterwards talking about how screens and technology are impacting our kids. Middle school created a whole new five lesson series of digital citizenship this year, and we've already mentioned the AP class. Our overall goal from E was hardware and software acquisition. So this district very generously bought all the Chromebooks, all at the same time, three years ago. They're all going to die at the same time, right? So we, we can't, we can't have a plan that just says, well, we'll just wait and see what happens, right? So last year, when I was middle school principal, reinstituted the Technology Committee, and you'll be careful what you wish for, it's now mine, you know, came with me. And that's fine because it's good work to do. So what we did is we now have, I'm done two things. Oh, I'm actually talking about this slide, so I'll go back, is we have determined based on how the current Chromebooks are aging. So our replacement protocol moving forward will be every sixth grader and ninth grader next fall will get a new Chromebook. So, and the expectation is the sixth graders' Chromebook will survive middle school. And then they'll get a new one at ninth grade, and now they're even a little more responsible. So we hope it will last four years of high school. But by taking back the ones that they had the year before, that gives us a pool of older, most still functional, so that as they may break, we can trade them out. And we should have enough in stock so that we're not sending them out to be repaired as much. Because, you know, if you broke the screen, that's fine. We'll salvage the parts and give you one of the ones that we recouped from the year before. So that, so we've budgeted for that. That's actually in our regular budget is Chromebook replacements for those two grade levels. They don't get as much wear and tear at COTL because they live in carts, they don't go home with the children. So as of right now, we can restock any of those that break. And right now I have maybe two a year that break with those ones we've recouped from the secondary kits. And second grade has also asked for carts for each classroom as well. We've already created one because we did give all of our ninth graders new Chromebooks in January. So we have some of those for replacements, but we were able to create a full class set for second grade. So they are able to, sometimes on Chromebooks, sometimes iPad, it depends on what they're doing, makes the most sense. Because when you start to get a little younger, the keyboard action is, is a little challenging and it's not necessarily the best way to learn. So it's an option, they have it, but that's what we're looking at. We are evaluating options for replacing our Smart Boards. Next week, we have a Technology Committee meeting. We're bringing in another vendor to show us a different type of touchable screen that isn't just like this one is right now, is just a mirror of what I see here, but a completely different way of having things wirelessly pop up from every device in the room and slide them around and, and think about what we want to replace the Smart Boards with. A large chunk of our Smart Boards were purchased in two thousand eight. So they are aging and we need a plan. So we are planning to pay for that with Smart Schools investment money, the first set of replacement Smart Boards. We're intending to use some of this grant money. Mr. Albano referenced it, it's just over two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. We have put in a plan from districts around us. I believe it will take twenty back and forth with the state till they are happy with the plan. We've had our first back and forth and first partial approval and, you know, we're, we're working it. But four main things. We have asked for that money to go toward. One is new interactive whiteboards, replacing some Smart Boards, as many as we can fit into that money. We cannot replace this whole district's Smart Boards, even if we put all of that into it. It still is going to be more than that. But we can certainly get the next few years of needed replacements out of it. We are getting a new server for the district. It is aging and it does not have a full redundancy if the server goes down. So we've budgeted that into the grant. And then high tech, high-tech security features is a category. More cameras, we're missing some cameras. Phones in every single classroom that also have, have the ability to turn their speakerphones on all at the same time. So in the event of an actual emergency, we don't have to use the overheads. If it's better to have a quieter announcement because you're hiding under a desk, it'll be the phone that's talking to you instead. And that's the things we've put into that. And hopefully we'll get our final approval on that soon. So that's three parts of the strategic plan and twenty minutes left. Thank you.
Excellent.
Dr. McDonald, thank you. That was very informative. It's nice to see that we have a plan for the grant money and that it's getting implemented. Is that something that will be available to parents? Kind of that, that slide there, is that something that will be on the website?
The whole, this whole presentation, yes, will be available. Yep.
Okay, that's great. Any, any questions or?
No, I just, I'm very impressed. I think it's excellent. Very exciting things happening, especially with the technology. I mean, just to see what's happening with the websites and one thing we didn't mention also was like the parent portal is new. There's so many ways for parents to be involved and see what's going on in their child's education. I would think it would be a great idea if we could show a little bit, every board meeting, of just a little something like we just saw.
Like a little something that's happening in the classrooms?
Every single time. It would take five minutes. It would go so far. I know when the board, when we did our tour and we were in the classroom, we were so impressed with what we saw with technology, but, you know, no one else is seeing it. And that, I think, I think it's priceless. I think that goes so far. So I would love to see more of that. We have heard as board members from our, our administration team how well the Writing Revolution is going. And we heard from parents tonight that they're happy. Maybe if some of that work could be published and we could actually see, I, I think that would really be great, that if we could share with the community the things that we are doing so well, the advances in technology, I think we should be really talking about twenty-four seven. Because I just think what the, what the teachers are doing in the classroom, teachers working with each other, teachers teaching each other, and that is the product of that, we should be talking about that all the time.
Well, I, I will say that every board meeting from now through the end of the year, we do have something planned for the board. We're, we're trying to stick to the strategic plans, but, you know, the old format from last year I think was thorough, but Ellen and I spoke and we talked about, let's just give you what's current at this point and let's use some visuals. Picture, you know, says, is worth a thousand words. So I, I just need to personally compliment Dr. McDonald because, you know, this is her first year in this new position and she's embraced it. And, you know, this is an example of, of what's happening. And I know the board has this goal of communicating this to the public. And we set up our board liaison positions and we've been working at it, but hearing directly from Ellen, who supports our teachers, and maybe even inviting in some teachers, I, I think would be very well received. We have spent a lot of time on our capital project discussions and, and, and other business-related items, but, but this is, this reminds us of why we are all here.
Absolutely.
It's the teaching and learning. So Ellen, thank you for a wonderful presentation. Well done.
You're welcome. Everything I showed you was the work of other people, so I thank all of them for everything they've done that I could show it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Carl's a great idea. I mean, we love our children, but if, I don't know that they're coming home and showing us the things that they're doing. So like Michelle said, when we had the tour and then seeing what you showed us tonight, even listening, some of the cross-curriculum things we do with the academics last year with the Holocaust, where they were reading the book in one class, they were learning about it in history, and then we had someone present, we had a presenter come in who was a survivor. I think those are the things that we have to do more of in these sessions to, to make the parents aware and make the community aware of what the school's doing. I don't think we do a good enough job of that. And I appreciate what you did and I appreciate what the teachers do. So thank you.
Okay.
Any comments or questions from the public?
Well, I could say that it takes forever to better put some time in. It's, it's, I think, to do.
I just wanted to sit through all that too. I mean, I'm glad to hear stuff about curriculum instruction.
If you wouldn't mind, so, so you're on camera, Miss Tate.
No, I just want to thank the board for allowing Dr. McDonald to come up here and talk about, you know, the instruction and curriculum and things that are happening. I think that's what parents really want to know about. And I think maybe you might get a better turnout if that's what we're talking about. I think that's maybe why it's dwindled. People got tired of hearing some other things that like, that don't, that, you know, this really affects our kids. And we like to hear about that more and it's so nice to see. So I'm glad you saw it. Glad I came.
Next workshop is in May and we will have more strategic plan updates for you.
Okay, if there are no other comments, that is going to conclude the workshop for tonight. Thank everybody for coming. Thank those who tuned in at home. And thank you, Lee Lu. Thank you, Dr. McDonald, for your presentations this evening. Have a good night.